Work session for April 26 of 2022. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello? Downstairs.
What did they ask? Is he decent? No. What did you say? Like, well, in a public building, I'm also.
Can we follow that up? How do you follow that up?
Just keep going.
Go Angels.
Sorry.
All right. Any of the Commissioners have any conflicts that they need to declare?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the March 8, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Please sign in right there.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 8 meeting minutes.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Let's move on to the continuing discussion on the building type.
Steve, did you get any feedback from FLL? No, there's more chairs.
There's plenty.
Come on in.
Chair.
You're welcome to come on in.
You're not sticking out here. Come on. I'm fine. No.
Okay. In the staff report or the memo, I kind of explained what had happened. He missed the very first, one of the first words, if I can get my memo. So when you go through it, where the first word, it says means the average, he missed that. Because his concern was, well, if we only measure the walkout, that's always going to be the tallest and, you know, you're kind of hurting everything. So as soon as I explained to him, well, it's an average of all the points, he went, oh, okay, never mind. That's how it should be. And I'm like, well, you know, at least we were able to clarify what his concern was.
Right.
That it wasn't anything that we overlooked or talked about. So he was fine with how it was, how it read. As long as it said average, you could take the short, the high, and the averages out, so.
Yeah, that's what we all agreed on, right?
Right.
He said, that's why I was like, isn't that, well, because he was explaining it, I'm like, that's, that's what we agreed on, right? But I wasn't.
It was kind of confusing what he wanted.
Yeah.
So I was like, you know, I'm glad we tabled it. At least it's easier to just read, you know, come back another time. So, so really, it is what we've got. That's what he liked, you know, he likes it, so I don't think we, I think we've looked at everything that we should. So really, it's just, we can't do anything about it tonight unless you guys wanted to change some of the words, but I'll bring it back to the next meeting to finish it off.
I did, as I was thinking about it, I didn't have something. Thought came to mind when we're talking about taking the average of the ground. Can I use the board, please?
No. I don't know, can you?
So our proposed ordinance is three points.
A minimum of three.
Maximum of eight. So if you have a slope, these are contours, and you put a building on a slope here, you know, this is your high side, this is your low side, and you're talking about three points. They could strategically put their points like this.
Well, to me, it would be one of those, if we have that kind of grouping, I'd say, give me eight.
Okay. But it's up to you to come back. Okay. As long as that's.
I mean, if it's a flat piece of ground, to me, three's enough.
Right.
I mean, one's enough.
I'm talking about a scenario where they try to manipulate that to work.
Yeah. I would say, give me more points than that, because I do want, it needs to be an average, so I take the really low, the really high, and a couple in between, and.
As long as there's something in this that says you have the ability to kind of regulate that.
Well.
Unless otherwise directed, he has.
Because I'll come back and say, well, it says a minimum of three, I'm giving you a minimum of three.
Yeah. But I would say equidistant, so are they equal distant? Are they?
That's what I'm saying.
No.
You could put them equidistant and still make it work to your advantage with just three. Whereas if you had four, you know, they do here, 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 and here, or here, 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 and here, and you get a more true average, like a minimum of four. Well, I mean, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Makes sense.
Hopefully, that's not the only reason. Do we need to change the wording, so?
I was gonna say, what was the point of having three?
Because doesn't it say on each building facade, so the points would have to be on the same side of the building, right?
No. No. That's not how it's.
Along each building facade from finished grade to the highest point. So the, so from, now, my picture's right in the way, so I don't know.
Is this equidistant around the building?
But yeah, it is along each building facade.
Yeah. Do they, gotta have at least three on each side?
Well, I mean, again, if I have a flat surface, I'm not going to be concerned with, you know, if it's on, like Jase had just shown, it's flat. I mean, we might be an inch off in each direction.
If it's flat, yeah.
On a slope one, I'm gonna ask for more, because it's each facade, so I at least need four.
I just don't want there to be a scenario where they come back and say, well, it says three, I'm giving you three, can you really ask for more? Because that's what your ordinance says, I have a minimum of three.
Right.
I'm giving you a minimum of three.
Well, I can talk to Andy and see how we can, we can resolve that.
Because he has a point with the diagram, you know, showing it around the entire building, and we have a facade.
You can always look at it that way, so, yeah.
Because if it's three points on the side, that's hard to manipulate.
On each side, yeah.
But if it's three points around the building, I guess maybe there's a way to.
That's what I want to clarify is.
No, I'll, I can get with Andy and bring it, you know, I can bring it back next meeting. Depends on how you want me to do it. Just bring it back then and explain what we changed and to vote on it and go from there. Okay. Well, I'm gonna take a picture of this, just because I found that my brain doesn't necessarily remember everything detail. It's probably what blended things.
He's old.
I tend to sometimes forget, so. Okay, yeah, we can, we can look at that, make sure that we're covered on it, and we're not cheating the system, so to speak.
But I'd also just say, I'm on each building facade, so you couldn't just have three points if you have four sides of the building, right?
Right. But then what's the point of three? I guess is the point.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Should we say four, a minimum of four?
I think you get closer with four. And like you said, on a flat surface, it doesn't really matter, but.
Yeah, I could, I could get with Andy and say, I mean, if it's on a slope, three to, four to eight, if it's flat, then up two fours enough for kind of.
Or if we just said four to eight, would that really make a difference? Because if it's flat.
Unless I'm one of three.
Then it's just simpler, you don't have to.
Well, if I say, I'll, I'll get with Andy and we can tweak it a little bit and go from there. And I'll highlight what we, what we changed.
Yeah, if there's any benefit to three versus just.
Just four.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, then the next item is the sign, continuing discussion unless the types of signs allowed.
Okay, so last time we talked about it, when we were doing the mixed-use ordinance, whoo, almost said something else, that document had also brought up signs as part of it. That chapter was removed because we already have a signed ordinance, so I didn't feel too bad. But it also provided other types of signs, like we had kind of talked about. So I went through the ordinance and kind of said, okay, well, we need to add this word, this word, and eliminate this. Since we no longer have a regional commercial, I went through and said, okay, we'll pick out and remove the regional commercial from the ordinance, because it doesn't apply anywhere, and then add in the downtown zones and the front-runner stations. So for monument signs, we, I changed just what a monument sign is to a horizontal, so that's what you see today, it's more horizontally, because we talked about having one that goes kind of a vertical horizontal, so we just added the word horizontal in front of it, so it's, it's that. Left the allowances, left what, you know, it allows and stuff in there, so the only thing that would be changed is adding the word horizontal and get rid of the regional commercial and adding in the other zones that we have.
Going back to that, though, Steve, on the monument signs. If, if we do ever have a development where you're gonna have a planned commercial with multiple, I don't know where that would ever be, it could happen if.
For like pylon signs and stuff, or?
For, for, because monuments, I mean, I, I worked on this a little bit in the city I work in, and every city called a monument sign was something different. Riverdale City is actually quite different from what other places had it. And a monument sign to them is one that's basically starts from the ground.
Right.
The sign is built from the ground, but in our city, they can go as high as 30 feet in the air.
A monument sign?
For a planned commercial. So that all of the, if you're, if you've got a straight frontage of like 300 feet, and you're gonna have eight different businesses, and they want all eight signs on that one monument sign, and you can't do that on the monument, because it's this tall.
In this, in the allowances after shall apply, it kind of goes in, if you have a property that is 100 feet or less, here's what you could have. If it's 100 feet or more, here's what you can have. And then other portions of the general description of what monument is, it has to be so far apart from another one. So it, it does have a limit of eight feet. It can't go beyond that for, for a horizontal monument. So ours would still be limited.
So it would be limited to whatever you put in, however square.
Yeah, so I'm just showing you what the portions of the ordinance were changing versus giving you the whole thing.
Well, and as we talked about the horizontal monument, as its definition, I, you know, do we look at that restriction? Do we restrict it at eight feet?
Yeah.
Or do we allow it to go higher?
No, it's, it's got restrictions.
It's restricted right now at eight feet.
Yep. So we didn't talk about changing those. This was just changing it to put it in particular zones. So the next portion was, okay, we're gonna, we talked about having a vertical monument. And the difference between a vertical monument and a pole sign is it's attached to the ground.
This is the same.
Where a pole sign, you have a ten, a minimum of 10-foot clearance, and you have a pole, and it kind of goes, so this would just allow for, again, a different type of sign. But we also didn't want to have it, because a pole sign, yeah, it's got a small area as it goes up, and then it can be really big because of the allowance. Well, this one, we still wanted to keep it kind of in the monument sign. If you're less than 100 feet, then it's 50% of what's allowed. And if you're over 100 feet, it's 75% of what's allowed. So it's still, it's not going to be 20 feet wide and 30 feet tall, it's still going to be like you took a monument sign and just twisted and put it up.
And this is more specifically geared for.
Well, there is one company, there's one company that would like it.
Because all their signs are like that, you have all their hospitals, you have.
Yeah, there's one sign that the company would like it.
I was gonna say, that's the one I think of when I think of it.
But others may.
Which, which when I drive by, I was like, where's the damn sign for this thing, you know? And I'm like, oh, well, okay, here we go.
It's on the building.
Yeah.
So, again, I just kind of took what the vertical or horizontal signs allowances were and applied it to the, the vertical ones, so.
I think it's good. Okay.
The other type of sign that we were looking at, again, pole signs, just taking out regional commercial, oh, for some odd reason, it had it, regional commercial, the zones, manufacturing, and then it repeated itself again a little bit later, so we didn't need the double language of identifying where it can be, so we're just kind of take that out. But again, substituting downtown zones and the gateway for those, those areas that apply. We looked at projecting signs, again, those are just signs that go perpendicular outside the building, kind of following the same allowances that the mixed-use ordinance was talking about. Again, talking in the downtown east gateway, west at the central, in the station. Reason why north and south is because those are more residential oriented, no commercial. Height, just having a clearance, but it can't be, when you're looking at on the building, can't go above the parapet of the building, so, because right now, we don't allow for roof signs to keep it consistent. Quantity, one per tenant per street frontage. So, you know, when you drive down some of those old, older towns, each tenant has their own sign. You know, if these were bigger signs, kind of like a canopy or something, it might be one per building. You know, Egyptian theaters, like, kind of like that, even though it's just one use, it's so big that you don't need 19 of those going across the, the road. And then it can't project closer than one foot from property line. Want to still be able to have that allowance of it being a little bigger, but didn't want to say, you know, it couldn't be within five feet, because again, just let them have that ability. But knowing at least on 1900 West, you get a 15-foot setback. So if they can have a 14-foot sign coming out of there, there's some serious structural issues at play that might make it almost impossible.
No post to help you hold up here.
Yeah.
No post for your predictive.
Right. I'm kind of taking, again, the same language for the projecting marquee signs, these are kind of the bigger ones, like Egyptian theater and what have you, with what the, the mixed-use ordinance was talking about. This, it said the manual letters that you can put on there. Most people are going to the electronic messaging, so I just said, I'll take out the manual letters, let's just put in the messaging board so that it can be part of it already. You know, we could put in either or, but if I'm gonna spend the money, and might as well do, if I was the owner, put in a messaging board, then I can type it up, and it's changed instantly than, than the 15-year-old out there trying to, you know, stick them off and put them up.
So what's the purpose of the 30% limitation for the EMC part of the sign?
Our current ordinance for monuments and stuff is 50% of the total sign package. Again, I just took the language out of the mixed-use. Most of it, again, was the sign, you know, if it's two feet, you're not, you can't take up the whole thing. I mean, we can change it to, to 50% to match the rest of it. I just kind of took the same language and brought it in.
I'm just trying to understand the advantage one way or disadvantage one way or the other of limiting that. I mean, would there be, and I'm not supporting or, you know, supporting one or the other, I just want to understand it a little better.
I, I really don't know why they picked 30%. It was just what the language was, so I just copied and pasted it.
Because I'm just imagining, I mean, obviously, we may be trying to avoid it look like Vegas, you know, where everything's lit up. But if you had a, like a projected sign that had a wraparound, that was all digital, what's the downside? What are we trying to avoid with that?
It's kind of what, you guys can, I'm not married to the number, it can be 50, it can be 90, it could be 100.
I'm just assuming there was a reason for it, for saying 30%.
Well, we only have one gambling operation in Roy, and they got shut down.
That's right. So hopefully, that'll be a discourge for anybody trying to do that again, so.
So what is our restriction on a, a flat sign?
A wall sign?
Yeah, wall sign.
I don't recall EMC's being allowed on a flat sign. I know they are on monuments, but it might be. I did bring my book, so I kind of can't remember.
I pulled the ordinance up, I don't know that I see it.
But I do know, like, monument is 50% of the, of the sign itself.
I don't know, maybe we'll just keep it as it is, and then if someone raises issues, we can have another.
I mean, we can keep it consistent where it is, you know, 50%, you know, no more than that, and, you know, we can say, well, it's kind of that way throughout our whole sign package, and.
I'd rather defend that than try to defend, we don't know why, which might be 30%.
That's why I'm asking the question, because if somebody does contest it and say, is there a certain reason why, and that we're all just standing there going, we don't know.
Yeah.
Because if they propose something that's attractive and, you know, then, I just wonder why we have the language.
I'm not married to that number. So if we want to change it to, to the 50% of being consistent with the rest of the ordinance, then let's just do that.
I think at least I have, we have an answer.
I don't know why.
It may not be a good answer.
But at least it's an answer, I mean, we're consistent, you know, with our ordinance.
The sad part is, I'm not sure why it's 50%.
Yeah, right, but that's.
Just stop when you're ahead.
They won't go that far.
Some ordinances, when they were adopted way back when, they had a reason, but.
Because like you're saying, I mean, most people are moving away from those kind of signs where you're sticking up letters, and that allows some more flexibility for.
Well, to me, it's also.
I think those are nicer signs.
Those businesses that have now gotten them have less temporary signs. Because all of a sudden, now, they can.
They can change it.
Change it almost instantly, or have it, have eight or nine different advertisements every 10 seconds, you know? So to me, it was a, a good idea, because what I did with the ordinance is took it away as a, it used to be a conditional use. They had to come here to get approval, and it couldn't be within, you know, this, that, and like, just let everybody have it, please. But I, you know, 50% is fine with me. Keep it consistent, keep it regardless of the time, that's fine. Other than that, again, it should be one per lot. Again, most of those buildings, it's a rather larger sign than a regular projection sign. Placement of the building, just kind of the same typical type of stuff. Getting clearance of eight feet, so, you know, no one's bonking their heads unless you're eight foot one, then, well, you're, you're just in trouble. Was that Jase?
I was just thinking about the one sign that we had at the gas station, where I had the gas station and the car wash sign. Was there an issue with that being on the same property? Two different signs, same property, but two different businesses, excuse me.
Like pole sign?
Yeah.
Um, well, again, pole signs have to be 100 feet away, and to me, if it's on the same property, if one's advertising the other, do it, you know, I don't care. To me, it's almost a, it was a mixed-use horizontally, you got the bank and the Chevron.
Because I couldn't remember, that's, that came up years ago, and I can't remember what, what was.
It was just, our old ordinance was outdated.
And we updated it at that time, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And then we talked about awning signs. Again, if you take, go down any historic street, you got awnings. 25th Street, we gotta exclude, because historically, it wasn't on the diagonal side of the, of an awning, it was on the, the fringe or whatever hangs down. So all of theirs on 25th Street, that's their sign, is the lip portion. But if you go onto Washington or other cities, it's on the diagonal portion, so it's a little bit bigger height. We don't have a historic district, we don't have any awnings somewhere, anywhere, so there's no reference to go to a historic type thing, so allowing it to be on the, the diagonal portion, to me, is neither here nor there. So if you go 25th Street and wonder why their awnings don't have those big signs on it, that's why. But Washington does. I think, yeah, that was the last ever. And then the numbers did change, so what used to be four, five, and six, now are seven, eight, and nine.
Oh, cool.
Other than that change, do you see anything other issues that?
Looks good.
Looks good.
Okay, good. So I'm just bringing it.
You got any?
At the next available meeting, I might not be.
Next available meeting.
I might not be able to get it next week, because I think advertisements was due today, so.
If we want to address the political signs.
Well, we can, I didn't put it as part of this.
That was part of a discussion when we left our.
It was an item that was brought up, yeah?
Yes, it was brought up.
I think I'd like to keep that as a separate. Let's move this, because that's gonna merit one more. I mean, I'm fine having a discussion, but as far as like moving it forward, I, me personally, I'd like to separate it, and that way we can address that head-on, because that's gonna take a little bit more discussion.
But I can, I can bring it next time.
But if you want to bring up a point, I'm fine with that. My opinion is just separate.
I just don't know that there's anything really to bring up, because the interpretation of what we currently have, I mean, because, once we finally got him a sign and said, okay, what is it your heartburn is? His heartburn is that if he's in a rougher office, he wants to put his sign on his property. There's nothing in our ordinance that says he can't.
Well, campaign signs, there's a, there's a time and place.
And, and I looked at some legislation.
Political signs where, you know, I hate so-and-so, you know, to me, that's freedom of speech, like you're saying, that can be put up any time. But a campaign sign is very distinctly different. And our, our ordinance says political slash campaign, so it almost is, we just need to go through it and separate the two away from each other.
I thought the bigger issue was the timing. Like, he's like, well, I'm limited in time, why can't I start campaigning in January?
Right.
For two years from now.
Well, he wants.
I don't think anybody wants that.
He wants to make it as soon as he.
Scratches the name, yeah.
He scratches the name, he wants it up. So, I mean, because if he puts it in the window of his house, it's okay, it's enforceable? If it's on his property, right? And so.
Right now, it is, yes.
So.
If it's in the window, we can hold time, take it out.
Enforceable.
Is it? Okay.
Because the campaign signs can only be a certain number of days before primary, before the general, period regardless of where.
On his private property?
Yeah.
Period. Okay. That might be something we check into, I had this discussion with.
But I, we can bring it back.
It might be something we wanted to review, because he's pretty adamant about it, and he's quoted a couple of things, I just want to make sure we dot the i's.
Nope.
Coming up this November, right? We have midterm elections coming up in November.
June 28.
You got county, you got county commissioners.
Well, that's when it starts, yeah.
You got county commissioners already putting signs up. That's not, that's not.
But in the city of Roy, there are no elections.
No. The county has elections, but nothing for the municipalities.
But, you know.
But each city regulates their own sign, so if you're an unincorporated part of the county, they have different rules.
Yeah, that's been interesting.
But even if somebody's not campaigning for an office in Roy, and it's a county position, which there are elections, they'll still put signs up here.
It's supposed to comply with our ordinance.
Regardless of where it's at, they have to comply with.
And the biggest one that everybody fails to do is register who to contact in case a sign's in the wrong place with the code enforcement officer.
Yep.
Even our own forget that.
I think I just gave everyone your cell phone number.
It's not my number, I didn't count.
I had to end up sending a message to all the county commissioners, what I had ended up.
Okay, I can forward this on.
Okay.
It may be on the next meeting, I got it, I think today was the deadline to put it in the paper, so I'll have to, if I can get it in tomorrow to them, and they can still get it where it's supposed to be, then we'll move it on. If not, it'll be in June. Okay?
Okay, on to the water wise.
Okay, this one, your document was huge, and I'm sorry. But I didn't know what Weaver Basin really wanted, what Weaver Basin, you know, had. So I put in a call after I sent it to you guys, and asked them, what are your must-haves? What are your, you would likes? And what are your, I don't cares? So the presentation really is just from what was given to you, but really, their must-haves are, anything that's eight feet or less shouldn't be in grass.
Should not.
Should not be in grass.
You mean by that?
The space between the curb and the sidewalk.
So my lawn is, my stones are okay, right?
Your stones, do you have any sod in there?
Would you, well, I have crabs in there, but took it out.
Okay. But anything that's eight feet or less, so basically, most everybody's side yards, most sods don't really do well. Your sprinkling system's watering beyond what it should, or not enough. Your sprinkling system's watering beyond what it should or not enough, so that's one of their must-haves. This does apply to any brand-new homes, or anybody re-landscaping their yards.
So not those that already have it?
If you're already existing, you can't even exempt.
Right.
The numbers, and this is what threw me off, and I was glad I spoke with them, where it says, single-family, 35%. 35% of your yard, is what I interpreted it, can be sod. And what he said is, no, that's 35% of your front and sides, not your rear. Your rear is not included in this, it can be 100% grass, because that's what most people's concern was, was, well, I've got little kids, they need to go outside and play, why can't I have grass in my backyard? Then what John had said is, we're not concerned with your rear yard. If we can get everybody to change their front yards and their side yards to drought-tolerant, water-wise type plantings, we're going to save a lot of water, and their rear yards can be there. Now, it doesn't mean they won't encourage you to modify your backyard, to limit the number of, the amount of sod, but it's not part of the requirement. Okay? So we can still meet the flip-your-strip program with Weaver Basin, and just say, front yards and side yards, no more than 35%. Commercial, it's 15%. The concern I had about this is because most townhomes or apartment complexes are commercial in this area. My current concern was, well, we require tot lots and stuff like that, and the last thing I want them is to play in the, you know, in the bark and get wood slivers in their feet and stuff, and he goes, that's not what it is. If you have the designated play area, it can be sod. It's 15% of everything else can only be sod. So, you know, there are setbacks between buildings, what's just, just kind of leftover land that really isn't much usable, they can do in drought-tolerant landscaping, or the space, you know, those little things, but the big areas that we want people to go play in, the kids to go play in that's active, can be sod. So that was kind of, we had a good conversation that eased mine, because when you look at the eight-page document and everything they wanted in there, it was like, oh my goodness, this is a nightmare. Breaking it down like that. Prohibit lawn in the buffers, really, it's that eight-foot area, encourage, again, the drip system is encouraged, but if you're going to do drought-tolerant plants and stuff, you're already going, thinking that way anyway. He said, put it in language of that it needs to be drip, you know, your sod can still be the spray, but limit the height of the pop-out and stuff like that. Those are kind of the, we wish you would, but don't, aren't required to. Smart irrigation controllers, again, that's a money thing, but again, most people, if they're already conscious of wanting to do drought-tolerant, they're already going to start looking at stuff like that.
I think, didn't the state have the reimbursement for that, or some kind of program?
The state does, and if we did kind of these numbers, we would qualify anybody in the city to those, that reimbursement as well. He did say that single-family, the state was looking at 40% and commercial at 20, and I said, well, if we limit it to 35 and 15, we're still within their numbers, so. And the state said, basically, HOAs can prohibit you from doing this. So anybody that's in an HOA, go ahead, have fun, enjoy. They can't limit you from that.
Okay, so the last item is a state statue and not a Weaver ordinance?
It's part of theirs, because they want to encourage it, but yeah, it's a state statute type thing.
Okay.
So, and then I kind of gave you what other cities have done with this. There's not many in this region, Layton, Clearfield, and I think...
Washington Terrace.
Washington Terrace have done it. Syracuse is kind of in the same place we are, we're talking, they're talking about it. So, you know, there's not a lot out there that have adopted these type of scenarios. Most of the water districts are very, they talk, so they're all consistent on what they are. So the requirements in South Jordan, again, commercial of 20, single-family 35, are consistent with what Ogden and Logan are going to be asked to do as well. And again, this applies to new and those who are redoing their yards, not if you had it established already, you're kind of grandfathered in.
But this is just if you want to participate.
Well, this is to be able to help those who do want to participate. Now, granted, Weaver Basin said, well, if they're going to participate, they're, they're going to make it do beyond what our requirements are. But in order for Roy City citizens to participate in that program, there was those four or five must-haves.
But the city has to have.
Yeah, have to have it in there. So what I'll do is, I'll start looking at, there's like 11 sections that talk about landscaping, so I'll go through each one of them and figure out what we need to do, and I can bring it back to the next work session, kind of show you what things we will have to change in our ordinance in order to comply with their ordinance.
Was your question whether this would apply to everybody who does it, or just those that are trying to opt into the...
Kind of both, yeah. It's like, is this just going to be like, if we do this, all new construction, we'll now have to meet...
No, so if you have, if you have an established park strip that's in sod, and we adopt this, you are now eligible for flip-your-strip.
And that's essentially just a program where I put in the work, and then I submit off, and then they reverse it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll sign off, you know, there's a, a big step process to get it all done.
And the qualifications, you have to put in, kind of tolerant plants, it's not just pull out your grass, throw in rock and apply, because they don't accept.
Yeah, well, and some, that's what some people are worried about, is that people just put in rock and it'd be all ugly, blah, blah, blah. But they actually teach you, you have to like, go to some kind of class or something. They teach you how to do these things, and then it...
The great thing...
So not everybody's going to want to participate, but there will be some, and if they do, then they'll probably do a good job, but...
But if it's a new build, then it would have to make these standards. That's the, that's the question that I think he was asking. So yes, you can opt in to do it if you're existing, but then on new stuff, this would be new requirements for only new builds.
The state bill, I think I want to say 110, I could be wrong, it could be 330, I can't remember, but it basically has said that no new builds can put in their landscaping this year. So even if you had a brand-new house and you wanted to do it, you can't, or you, I should say, you shouldn't.
Shouldn't.
Never mind my neighbor who just did, but anyway.
Well, I mean, it's drought...
So it's trying to discourage everybody throwing sod out everywhere when cities and counties are trying to get these drought-tolerant, water-wise ordinances put together.
Well, yeah, if you think about how much water is wasted on our park strips, it's kind of mind-blowing. Having grown up as a farmer, that's not acceptable.
Park strips that are larger than eight are exempt from this.
Yeah.
Because again, you're a large area. Guess how wide my park strip is? Eight feet.
Congratulations.
Yeah, there are some cities that have really big ones.
Ours is a second front yard.
It is a second front yard.
So what happened to like, all the urban heat theory and all of that stuff? Because that was one of the things, like 15 years ago, nobody could do this stuff because it created too much urban heat and... Just throwing that out there.
Things change.
Science changed.
Artificial grass.
Artificial grass, I don't think it's a problem, but just so you know, it would not qualify for flip-your-strip or any reimbursement. They've said no to that.
To what, I'm sorry?
Artificial turf.
Oh.
Even though, you know, as long as you don't put concrete under it, and it's just dirt and sand, to me, it's, you know, it's fine.
Knock yourself out, yeah.
But it wouldn't qualify in your flip-your-strip.
No. The savings is, you don't have to mow it, trim it, water it.
Right, they do have, you know, a limitation of how long they last.
You have to vacuum out all the particulates that get knocked into it, the gravel.
You've got a home D-bones, two or eight years is their warranties.
Yeah, so you get to change it out every couple of years.
So, I, to me, I've had a lot of people ask about artificial turf. Our ordinance just says landscaping, and defines it, any material that's covering the ground, excludes concrete, sorry, guys, concrete is not a landscape material. So I've had a few, I just said, go for it, have fun.
Have they made any comment in regards to like, the mulch in the park strips? Because it's affected by wind and rain, and it gets washed into the...
That would be part of your flip-your-strip program if you are doing that, but, you know, I'm not too concerned. I mean, one of their wishes is, we put in there, you know, it needs to be at least three inches deep, if you're going to do mulch for flower beds, but that's not something they would require.
My neighbor up the street just put it all in, and they had a really big rainstorm, and the drain that's on the corner of my house was just jam-full of all of his mulch, and I had to go dig it out.
You gotta, you gotta be careful until those plants get really big and you can cover it.
Yeah, it's kind of crazy, but...
But this, so this would be kind of like the minimum, but if people wanted to do flip-my-strip, which is a totally separate kind of thing...
This would qualify for everybody to be part of it.
Right, this would qualify, but they, that's a different program, they're going to say yea or nay on more things than, the city would just be like, this is the minimum, like, these are the requirements.
Correct.
If you want to put a turf in, do that, that's not going to qualify for flip-your-strip, but it would be fine for the city, yeah.
Is the city putting any incentive into it, as in strictly Weaver Basin?
No, the city is not, at least the council hasn't indicated they would be part of a incentive program.
Strictly Weaver Basins, okay.
Weaver Basin and the state.
And are all the water meters in Roy already for the secondary water? Didn't, weren't they putting those in over the years?
Not that I know of.
They're not? How long will that, do you know how long that takes?
I think they have till 2025.
Oh, okay.
Wow, that's going to be a while.
Because I was going to say, that's kind of the state's incentive.
I mean, it's not a long time, and...
But they've started to put in...
They gave $2.5 million, you're ready to look at, but it's, I think Roy City itself is going to be like 3.5 million just to replace.
Yeah. I was just surprised it wasn't done already, I was like, oh.
Well, up until recently, you know, secondary water was like, is used as much as you wanted. So they didn't worry about it. Now they're being mandated to do it.
By the state, yeah. Well, I think if we keep going in drought, a lot of these things will become...
Normal?
Much, yeah.
My lawn care guy who does the big strip that we have in our HOA, we talked to him about zero escaping here a couple of years ago, and he basically said, at the end of the day, he spends as much time cleaning it up as he does cutting the grass, and so we took a pass.
Yeah, the city is looking at, you know, converting some parks and some areas. They gave you kind of, the council, an idea of just Emma Russell, some of the areas there, and it was astronaut, it was like $2 million just to do outlying fringe areas, changing it out. So, I mean, it's going to, as the city goes through, it's going to be one of those budget items we have to look at.
If you don't put seed in, there are certain kinds of grasses that do better here, require all this water than others.
Just don't, don't put in grass unless whatever grows is the grass you want.
Yeah, yeah, just make sure it's mowed, and that's all.
Yeah. So with that, just so you know, and everybody hears and everybody in the room, code enforcement wise, we're not going after if your lawn is brown. We're going to go after if your weeds are eight inches tall.
Yeah.
So, you know, as long as everybody maintains their weeds, you know, the look used to be an issue, you know, we didn't want you to have dead lawn, but, you know, everybody's hurting from last year, and it's just going to look bad this year, so we've kind of taken the approach, just, you know, as long as everybody maintains their weeds, nothing will come of it, so. That's all I have, Chair.
Okay, so with this, obviously, we'd need a public hearing when we move to where we go a little further along.
Yeah, well, I'll bring in kind of what the changes I think are needed in order to comply, we'll come back to the least, next work session to look at that, and then we can modify the language from there.
Perfect, yeah, because I didn't feel like it was quite ready yet, so that's where I was going.
No, this is nowhere ready, because what I've given you in the packet was everything, and the great thing about the conversation is, he said, don't adopt that whole thing, it contradicts itself. That was just a sample for people to look at, so.
Yep.
Don't go look at the other cities that have adopted it.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, next item on the agenda is commissioner's minute. I don't have anything, does anybody, I mean, do other commissioners have anything?
No. According to Chris, I've already talked him out, so.
You got something to say about this one? This one? It says 15%. It could be 30%.
Move it all the way.
I've already flipped my cards.
Okay, so with that, we'll go to staff.
I really don't have anything to update, I mean, we've got a work session tomorrow on the general plan, you guys are more than welcome to come, it's just in the big room down here to kind of listen to what, how the council goes through it. I'm hoping we get through all of it tomorrow. It was actually supposed to be tonight, and I protested, saying, well, I'm leaving at 5:30, done or not? And they said, well, we'll just continue on, I'm like, no, you're not.
Did they decide the method that they're going to go through it? Because that was like, the whole topic last time, so I'm just wondering if...
That was all they talked about.
Right now, it's page by page.
Okay.
Unless...
Stay tuned.
Those during the meeting change otherwise.
Well, with that, I think a motion's in order.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Whoa.
Turn it off, Jase.